Good morning, everybody. We start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance and we'll have a major.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joe, do you need my seat? All right, thank you, everybody. Welcome to the Ohio Department of Public Safety Meeting of November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, in attendance, we have Mayor Manco. We have Superintendent Henry, Commissioner Foyle.
Good morning.
Commissioner Duandu.
Good morning.
Leila, we got Chuck and myself. And in Zillenland, we've got, uh, we've got to either get a little bit closer. We have Captain Mann, the sheriff's office. We have Jude Gates, and we have Jason Smith. We have Pat Ponway. Welcome back. Okay, that's it. So we'll start with our RFP openings and awards for the holster for the sheriff's office.
I move to authorize the high sheriff to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with the recommendation.
Second.
Motion to remain seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Duandu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I go, yes. Surplus vehicle facility operations.
I move to award the proposal for surplus vehicles as follows. The two thousand six pickup truck with VIN ending in one three nine three eight to Kevin O'Neal for thirty-five hundred dollars. The two thousand six pickup truck with VIN ending in one three nine three nine to Capital Auto Auction for fifteen fifty. The two thousand eight pickup truck with VIN ending in five six six zero five to Donna Dills for six thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. The twenty-ten E four fifty bus with VIN ending in zero zero two three five to Corkery Tractor Trailer for two thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The two thousand six E four fifty bus with VIN ending in zero one three two three to Capital Auto Auction for one thousand fifty dollars. And the Chevy Tahoe, uh, two thousand seven Chevy Tahoe with VIN ending in nine four six nine four to Corker Tracker Trailer for one thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made. Seconded. Any discussion at all? If not, on the motion, Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Duandu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, vehicles, the sheriff's office.
I move to award the proposal for a vehicle Ford van to Verpony Ford for an amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. And further authorize the senior director of finance to seek appropriate financing as recommended by the high sheriff.
Second. Motion has been made. Seconded. Any discussion?
I do.
Commissioner Foyle?
Uh, Sheriff, I assume this is going to help with some of the trends increasing transports anticipated come January first?
Yes, oh, absolutely. And this, this van is all-wheel-drive too, whether you previous vans on all-wheel-drive, which will help us out in each lane.
Yeah, and if we approve it, when is, when do you anticipate?
Uh, summertime?
Yeah, probably, yeah, the van probably won't be available until, till sometime in the summer.
Okay. Well, you have, but you had, you have another van that was sort of, um, you know, during
We have
A couple of vans, but one that's barely new.
Yeah, a few years back, we ended up buying, um, a new van, then COVID came in, and we've kind of like kept the mileage. Kept the mileage off that van. So, and the, and the other vans that we have are in pretty good shape, so.
So you're geared up. You're ready to go for January first.
Yeah. Oh, we're, we're, we're looking forward to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion?
We're gonna, we're gonna take that big bus out back, right? And we're just gonna put everybody in it.
On the motion, Commissioner Duandu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Sheriff's vehicle outfit?
I move to award the proposal for sheriff's vehicle outfit and equipment to Nevo for an amount not to exceed forty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars as recommended by the high sheriff.
Second. Motion has been made. Seconded. Any discussion on that?
Yes. A couple of things. One, I mean, obviously, um, Adamson Group has been our go-to for most, uh, departments, um, for a long time, but this is a significantly lower, um, price point. Do you have a sense of the timeline to, because there's issues with like getting the equipment, right?
Yeah.
They have a sense of when it would be outfitted?
Well, we're, we're, we're probably looking, I would, well, we're, we're looking probably like around April for, for all the equipment to come in and have it installed. So, and it could be sooner than that, too. So, but they did give us a great price.
Right. I think Adamson Group might even be more backed up aside from other.
Well, yeah, they, they, when they changed the ownership.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, there was some price changes, but they, they've since gotten a lot of national contracts. So all of a sudden, you go to and you go down there, they're like, oh, yeah, we're waiting on a hundred and fifty vehicles that we're doing for Las Vegas Metro. So it seemed like the, uh, the smaller communities weren't really their target audience anymore.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Duandu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Lots of consent agenda?
Yes, I move to approve the November ninth, twenty-three non-public meeting.
Second.
Motion to be made and seconded. Um, discussing or additions or subtractions. Are we, we're all set on those?
Just the moment. That's what I, that was the most important. Sir.
So, so
Yeah.
On the, on the motion, Commissioner Duandu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I agree, yes. Uh, let's go to, we need to make family accounts payable.
I move to approve the November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three accounts payable list total of two million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, seventy-two dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Commissioner Duandu?
Yes, I, I'm looking to take a quick look at a couple of warrants that I haven't seen yet.
The, the detail pieces only get emailed to us measuring maintenance, so I'll have Rhonda email you the the detailed warrant, and you'll go look on it here. Um, there is no IRV, there is no Warren Street. It was all like I said in the email breakdown, seventy thousand, the capital one was for the replacement fence for, um, wastewater treatment facility. And then fifty-five thousand five twenty of the fifty-seven two seventy-five for the ARPA contingent grants warrant.
Was that one? Yeah, oh, oh, sorry.
That, that was, that was for the HVAC engineering. So we have a huge HVAC project that's like over three million dollars. And so there's a vendor using for HVAC consulting services, and that's fifty-five thousand five twenty of the fifty-seven thousand dollar total, the warrant. Um, unfortunately, what happens is entry maintenance, um, emails us the detail because, again, southern warrants can be very lengthy. And so what happened was Rhonda didn't print that out. She only printed, um, the physical piece that we got that had just the cover sheet.
Sorry, no deal, no detail.
Right, I looked at it online, so I'll have that emailed to you.
Okay.
But those are both projects that we have approved, uh, on, you know, obviously.
Yeah, I believe, there was an award, there was an award on each one.
Yeah, exactly.
There was, there was an award on, on each one.
No doubt, but as I looked at this, all I saw was seventy-four thousand capital fund and fifty-seven thousand contingent grants.
We have the detail in our packet.
There's more detail in the packet?
Yes. Um, in fact, Chuck sent in line with the details of what those specific.
All right, I must have missed that.
Further discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Duandu?
Yes.
I go, yes. Okay, we're gonna change up the liaison. We have a little discussion on liaison updates. We're gonna do things a little bit different. Uh, if the liaisons have something that they outside of the department heads report, they can, they can mention it. So I'm gonna ask if any commissioners have anything that they want to outside of the department head, Commissioner Duandu?
Um, Kathy Stacy is not available to, uh, join us today. She has a health trust meeting, I believe, but she, uh, wanted to share that there, uh, there were some rather wealthy people in Portsmouth that have made some large cash deals and
Yes.
our offers increased with that. So that's good news that she wanted to share. I think she might have said that Chuck might know had a couple of the details of what the sizes were. I don't recall what they were, but.
One was four point seven million per house in downtown Portsmouth. That was a cash deal on the corner of Chapel and State Street, I believe.
Yeah.
It was. And then there were some condos in the Hamptons, a unit A, unit B, million and a half each, million and a half each, or whatever.
There, it's unbelievable in Portsmouth right now. The real estate market is like, I mean, it's you're hard pressed to find something under a million dollars right now, unfortunately. It's just unbelievable. And it goes up from there. There's a house that, you know, like, multiple properties right now in the multimillions, so, let's see. It's like, I don't know where all that cash is coming from.
We're on the wrong business.
Yeah, that was a very good day. There is like a hundred and twenty transactions that day. Tonight, it's been as low as like seventy. So that was a very very good day that that one came in. It's like seventy seventy-five thousand for the transfer tax for both sides, buyer seller. So we keep four percent as admin, so.
And I'd just like to share that I was at a meeting, um, with the courts about some of the, uh, stakeholders meeting regarding felonies. The move of felonies back to district court, and, uh, the court could not have been more complimentary of the Department of Corrections um, in terms of how they facilitate video hearings and just, um, some, the movement of bail paperwork, getting, uh, incarcerated individuals to sign things, getting it back. Um, so, uh, they said, quote-unquote, Rockingham is the best. So having to deal with a lot of department corrections, um, across the county because, so anyway. Uh, we always said Rockingham's the best.
I agree.
Source, and that was, I'd like to share.
Do you have?
That's all.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Well, I think, well, again, as the movement towards the department heads and that transition makes sense.
Yeah, I just want to say that, um, a lot of towns have calculated their tax rates, um. I took a look at the all thirty-seven of the communities in Rockingham County. It looks like we're still all under a dollar. It's great news. Um. So, I know that there's tax budgets, you know, in December, so all good there. Uh, and that's all I've got. Um, let's go to the travel and training requests for the NICO legislative conference.
I'd like to have a little discussion about that before we enter our motion.
Sure.
Um, I, and I know that you, uh, put on the motion for you to attend the conference. I think you've attended the last two conferences. Um, and it's time for someone else, either Commissioner Duandu or myself, to attend the conference, um.
I brought a, uh, form. I didn't, I didn't know this was gonna take, get taken up till I saw the packet, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I put in my own request because that is a conference that I'm interested in attending.
We have.
This is in Washington DC to meet with, uh, the folks that are doing national work and other counties from around the country. Uh, I'm, I've never attended. I don't know what I'm gonna learn, but I'll hang out, go to classes and learn.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, how I feel is, I would also like to attend. Um, I've been here for three years now. I've never attended. Um, I know Commissioner Churchill, you've attended twice.
Well, yeah, it's a little bit different. One's legislative.
Well.
One's in a different committee, but.
Well, last year at this time, you said, oh, I'm gonna bring back information. I'll do a write-up, and I, and none of that occurred. I asked specifically for that.
Well, actually, that's a little bit misleading because I did talk to the grant writer and gave her a bag full of information. You never requested anything additional from me. But having said that, I just want to say that I'm the one who put it in the budget for you to go. Yes, I did. I changed the line from travel to, uh, to a conference because I told everybody that I wanted to go, so. Um. You know, I actually ordered in the budget. Well, yes, but it was my motion.
And at that time, I, I voiced my concern. I said it makes sense for one person to go.
Yeah.
But it doesn't make sense for the same person to go year after year.
Well, then, then, then vote as you will. That's all I can say. So, uh, any further discussion?
Because where I come out is, I would very much like to attend. I've been here for three years. It makes sense. However, I recognize that I have a four-year and so, um, I will have an opportunity to attend next.
Well, what does that budget look like?
Yeah.
On that line?
We have ten, I believe, ten thousand in that line. That would be, I'd say.
Absolutely. Thank you. Conferences.
So.
So, yeah, I'll go.
Seventy-nine hundred is what's available, right?
Right, so we can theoretically.
So what are our plans for other conferences in addition to this that we might need to use that travel line?
Traveling the front, right?
Yeah. Yes. I mean, we're not sure.
That's what, that's local, right?
Well, so.
Usually of the, not Washington hotel.
It was last year.
It was really close.
It was in Portsmouth. I, I know Commissioner Churchill Cello stayed at the hotel. I don't know if
I didn't attend that one.
Oh, and I attended, but I didn't stay. So I, I mean, um, but, um, I also want Leila, are there other trainings? I know we had, is there, are there other things on your list to, the?
Um, you know, Shane Feeney, Shane Feeney usually has one in the fall, but they didn't this year.
The, the legal updates. I know. I love that. Yeah.
Well, of course you love that.
But I think, I don't use the county. I pay for it out of profit. I do that. Oh, yeah. No, I've never, I just, it's like, so interesting.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, I mean, the NHAC conference was, was, was on a cheap this year because it was so local and
Yeah.
you know, it was just that, it was just that.
Yeah, somebody stays there.
Yeah, so, um, so we need, we do need to say so where, where we are so that we can all, to still attend their prime next, we can probably afford to send two commissioners, one or two commissioners to.
What about the NHAC National Conference? You and, uh.
That's, that would be next July, in the budget. That's usually in this time.
Oh, because our budget ends in June, so that July would be appropriate for the next budget.
Yeah. Um, what I, what I'm willing to do is I'll forego the, um, prime X conference if it is up in the white mountains, I won't go.
Um, that still won't leave enough for, um, that won't leave enough.
That won't leave enough?
No, because is your, I'm sorry, what are, but what are you proposing?
Um, well, I'm, I'm, I mean, I have a motion that I'm, that, that I want to go to Washington DC. I went last year and was instrumental in talking to our national partners to actually get an AMR. So, um, I'd like to go again. And I'm asking to go again, and if the other two commissioners see that they don't want to send me, then that's up to them, you know, and that's the way the cookie crumbles, but what I'm saying is, is I, I'll make a, uh, you know, I'll make it known that I will not go to the prime X if I'm to go to Washington, so I'll save money there, but, so I'm not looking to go to both, I'm looking to go to one.
Okay, well, with this. I think that we could, when I look at the budget and the cost items, to me, it appears that we can send two commissioners, if we're interested, I mean, I'm, uh, commissioners to Washington DC and leave enough budget for prime X and some additional, I mean, training. And so with that, I'll make a motion to approve a travel and training request for Commissioner God, you and Commissioner Foyle and myself to attend the National Association of Counties Annual Legislative Conference.
I'll second that.
An estimated total cost for, uh, would be four thousand, six hundred and, uh, seven dollars and, um, forty-seven, forty, forty-four cents.
Okay, I came up with twenty-four, forty-eight.
For your cost.
Fuck, when, when I, when I did my calculation, it's the first time that.
Sure. So I'll say not to exceed, uh.
Five thousand dollars should do the job.
Uh, okay, so further discussion? Uh, okay, so on the motions, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Duandu?
Yes.
And I will vote no. So, really? Okay, next up, offer grant application.
Um, so we have those, do we, we have three new applications. The applications are for women aid, uh, pro, uh, for Portsmouth and, um, one, um, the third was, it is a second request.
It, it was Arts and Reach again. I think the third, this is our third application. I think they'll keep on applying. They'll keep on coming back to it.
Arts, so, just.
Is Arts and Education, is that the one in Portsmouth that?
Um, yeah, Arts and Reach.
That's just, kind of just for women and
They.
bring men to educate and emotional support.
It's for teen, at-risk teenagers who, um, they do basically, it's like therapy through art. Um, so.
But LGBTQ.
I don't, I don't know. I don't think.
That's what I read.
Oh.
It was kind of focused on that.
Okay. Um, so we have given five thousand dollars to Arts and Reach.
Already?
Already. I would propose giving them another five thousand dollars. Um, women aid, I don't think we've given any money to, and they do, they're almost like a, they give to various, um, or, or.
Lot of small, quick need.
And this seems like a, I mean, just exactly what we want. I would propose giving ten thousand dollars to women's aid. And then finally, with respect to Portsmouth, we, I believe already gave them money. Um, we gave them in twenty-two during COVID.
Yeah, another five.
And, and another, and we gave them another five, so I would, uh, suggest that we, we don't, uh, make any award at this time.
No. My, my thinking is we give enough of the money to anybody here because this is supposed to be COVID-related. Um, so I'll be voting no on, on all the current applications now. I don't see where there's a COVID, uh, connection with any of these groups.
Oh.
They did articulate.
There was one that the market square days, they were not able to participate in, and they lost twenty thousand dollars uh, in planned revenue. Um.
Women's aid also talked about, um, losses, just.
Okay, you guys can be looking at that as I had before. Uh, we're, we're two years past COVID. Um, I don't think that, uh, it's properly used this money right now for, um, whatever, because they've lost revenue. They probably either run it off or have moved on past that. That's my personal opinion. Um, so I'm gonna be voting no on that. That's one. And one, then two, I, I personally had a discussion that we were gonna freeze this for now just to see where things are gonna shake out as we get closer to it, the building, and you want to move some monies around. Um, I'm not, I'm not interested in spending down stuff just for the sake of spending it down. If I can move it, I will. And I just don't sit at these two organizations. Um, I don't see the connection on purpose. That's me.
Um.
They actually, they, women's aid, with respect to their application, they say directly, twenty percent increase in needs since uh, as a result of impacts of COVID, the needs of our community has increased. Charting this on our struggle, yes. Yes.
That was one day.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, honestly, I like what they're up to. That one, out of the three applications, that one jumped out. Me, well, I, I feel like we're helping people who are in trouble that, with that particular group. I could hold off on the other two. Uh, we, you know, we're not under any time restraint to make a decision. And I, I, I think that maybe to Commissioner Churchill's, uh, point, maybe we do need to look a little bit more closely at what's appropriate for these funds and what we're planning on doing it. Maybe we do a little review of, you know, what's, what's remaining, what kinds of projects maybe we should be considering, um, at one point along the way, and I don't know what others' feelings are on this. One of the biggest problems that we have with trying to enact a childcare, um, operation is the building space. Either we're gonna have significant costs for renovating an existing, existing space, or we need to consider uh, another building, if that was going to, uh, come to play. When, at the conference that we just went to, the, the county conference, uh, Senator Shaheen's E indicated that there was very specific money available for, uh, childcare.
Grant money?
Grant money. And so the combination of that, and I know I'm just bringing this up for the first time, is a, an uh, an opportunity to take a look at where we might get funding for what is, I think, more likely going to be a new building. And I think we have space on the campus to put something. I think it's a big advantage, and I think that, um, I still look at it, pursue it from the standpoint of planning and seeing what makes sense for our employees and for the county. Um, so, that's just one project that's on my mind with regards to this money. I don't know if it's appropriate use. I think we need to study it just a little bit more to decide where we're gonna move forward because uh, Commissioner Churchill is correct with not getting as many clear, I was damaged by COVID uh, grants, you know, requests. Um, although, I, I, I would like to move forward with the women's aid one. But that, that's my opinion.
And just to respond briefly, a couple of things. One, um, I had, when we started this, I had put together a matrix of criteria for evaluation of these organizations. And when we were, and I pretty much, um, I shared it with the, uh, Commissioner Churchill and, uh, Commissioner Trump at the time. And I've sort of used that, I mean, not sort of, I have used that in sort of those, in the evaluation as we go along. You're not thirty-two because, uh,
I hadn't seen.
Yeah, exactly. But I would support, again, I think, to your point, I, I have no problem. I've said this too, and I think Commissioner Churchill is correct that in the sense of, we should maybe revisit sort of even that matrix for a new sense of what we want to do, but, um, to the extent that we wanna, um, we, for Arts and Reach and for Portsmouth, we've already received um, some support.
Previous.
Support that we should, I'm fine tabling those two for now and just making a motion. So I'll, uh, move to award women's aid ten thousand dollars for the, um, for the, uh, category. Uh, two point three four.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Further discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Duandu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I go, no. All right, moving on to, uh, Chuck, new resolution. Resolution.
This is.
Not actually.
Yeah.
Cool.
So. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners, County of Rockingham, New Hampshire, declaring its intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of lease financing for certain equipment. The Board of Commissioners for the County of Rockingham, New Hampshire, the county has determined that it may be necessary or desirable to advance money to pay the cost of acquiring three twenty-twenty-three Chevy Tahos, four-wheel-drive police vehicles, and one twenty-twenty-four Ford Transit Ford Transit three fifty low roof, all-wheel-drive van, and one twenty-twenty-four F, F Ford F two fifty pickup truck with plow attachment collectively vehicle. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Rockingham, New Hampshire, one, the Board of Commissioners adopts this declaration of official intent. Two, the Board of Commissioners reasonably expects to reimburse advances made or to be made by the county to pay the cost of acquiring the equipment from the proceeds of certain lease financing with TV equipment financing incorporated. The maximum amount of financing expected to be issued in one or more, uh, series for the equipment is two hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The vendor supplying the equipment to whom money is due would be advanced by the county is Verpony Ford, one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and nine dollars total, and Moplin Chevrolet, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars total. Three, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. The foregoing resolution, uh, was adopted by the Board of Commissioners at its meeting on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
You know, so to adopt the resolution motion on the, uh, seconded?
I'll second that.
Second. So on the, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Duandu?
Yes.
I go, yes.
Thank you.
Exception request, we, we're sourcing.
I move to approve an exception request for personnel policy seven dash four for a human resources employee KK as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Seconded, seconded. On the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Duandu?
Yes.
Can I add something? I know you just wrote that, but I believe it was supposed to be bi-weekly and not weekly.
All right.
Doesn't say it in the motion.
All right, I might just.
You might add to that.
On the request, the, the write-up, it says weekly with the amount.
Okay.
The intention was to be bi-weekly.
Okay, right, per pay period, correct, sorry. So to the extent that I uh misspoke, I move to amend my motion to reflect. Uh, a per-pay period or bi-weekly.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded on, on that correction.
Thank you.
So I do?
Yes.
Foil?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the write-off request?
I move to. Approve. A write-off request. I'm sorry, I moved to approve a write-off of overpaid short-term disability benefits payments as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Seconded, discussion?
The just, just that as per defined in our packet, we're talking about just over six hundred dollars, so it's a relatively small amount. Um, just that we're addressing um from some time ago, and it's probably gonna be more costly to try to. Recoup them to write off.
Early discussion, not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Long-term care services, Jason Smith. Uh, IntelliCare.
I move to approve the IntelliCare Incorporated Staffing Services Agreement beginning November first, twenty-twenty-three, and shall renew automatically after the first year for successive. One-year periods and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Service.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I will, yes, Service Office?
I move to approve renewal of the memorandum of understanding with the Portsmouth. Police Department and the New Hampshire Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force and authorize the High Sheriff to sign all necessary documents we have reported.
Second. Which has been uh made and seconded, any discussion?
I am not going to be voting on this motion because I sit on the Police Commission in Portsmouth and also have that. Obviously, um, I support it all generally, just on both ends, but I'm not going to be uh voting on this.
All right.
Appearance of good.
So on the, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil abstain, and I'll vote yes. Two zero. Uh, department head updates, uh.
Good morning.
Come on then.
Um, well, we've had a bunch of things happen over the last week. We've got our leftover Yetis distributed. We've had a quiz, uh, go out to people that did not do the longness activities. And had a good uh response to that. So those went out last week. The fall holiday cards and the lent chocolates went out to departments last week, um. I think they were well received. I know in our department, we appreciated them, so thank you. Um, we're.
I was saying, uh, confirm that as well.
Yes, yes.
Great.
I, I've got many thank yous, like this, that, that, I, this is like the best thing that we've given out.
Well, I mean.
Just want to say that, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
HR for coming up, you know, for being the um brains behind the operation and coming up with the ideas.
Thank you. Uh, we have about seven people out on leave, so we're planning on mailing their um. Things to them because they won't be back in the next couple of weeks, so we want them to get them pretty soon. We do have about eighteen left over, so Allison wanted me to ask if the board had any. Thoughts on what to do with those, trying to answer right now, but.
Eighteen Yetis?
Uh, the.
No, the chocolates.
Oh. I don't want one. I was already eaten too many.
I was thinking maybe we could donate them to find, you know, we could send some to the um, like.
Did every, I'm sorry. Did every employee get, get one?
Yes.
That was the.
And travelers and agency and.
The somebody we missed is what I'm getting at.
No.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Perhaps we could do, no, uh, we could give some to like, uh, all the adult medical daycare facilities. We could do, I know there's like the soup, Sunshine Soup Kitchen, Crossroads, maybe just um. You know, a couple, we could just come up with a list of. Community places that might benefit too. Um, seems so.
Uh, Silverthorn in Salem and the um Easter Seals facility that we're supporting with the. Uh, adult daycare, I, little gesture, thank you for, I mean. It's not like they're making so much money from bringing in the, the, I mean, I, I think a thank you for helping our citizens is definitely.
We could, you know, like gather, again, some, like I said, sunshine, soup, soup kitchen and very places that are doing, just. Thank you for your, you know, recognition, maybe we can do something, send one over to um. To Meals on Wheels. Um.
The people who are supporting.
Yeah, and helping those.
Maybe with a card.
Yeah.
Maybe we put together a list and.
Thank you for your con, your contributions to help.
Yeah, I think that would be good use of those eighteen.
We'll just hold on to them for now until that's.
Okay.
Um, and also we have been um reminding departments that we're looking for evaluations and PCNs through the end of the year to be completed as soon as possible. So we can get that wrapped up before we transition over to the new system, so just putting that reminder out there as well. And that's it.
Superintendent Henry?
Sure. Uh, we're currently at one fifty-eight today. On Monday, we're at one seventy-three, so. Um, we're obviously going up and we see special weekend, so the bubble's coming. Um. We have the shower project on AB is, um, all lights are done, uh, all of. Jude's end is done, and Officer Evans with his crew is finishing painting. And all kinds of stuff, we anticipate having a unit open right after um the holidays, Thanksgiving, so it's gonna be great. It will cut down at one. Twenty-one, twenty-one spots of overtime technically, because we've opened another unit, so that's gonna be very helpful. Um. I, I can't take credit for how the court feels about the jail. We have really good people in good spots, video arrangements, good people working and processing everything else on, so staff. Does a fantastic job, so I, I like to thank them for what they're doing.
Lieutenant Banks has been phenomenal. He's the director of that division, so.
Yeah, yeah, but that hiring's going, and I'm gonna turn that over to the major about hiring.
Right, so we, uh, we had five hires starting on October twenty-third. We have another six starting on Monday, the twentieth. I have five more that are slated for PT on the same day, so that's five more that will come after, if they're all successful.
Wow.
Uh, just as an example about kind of how, how we're doing staffing-wise, Lieutenant Warden was able to give twenty-two employees time off next week. And we still have uh zero holes to people on every unit, which is something that we changed from mandatory to optimal. But we're getting back to that point, so things are really looking up.
Uh, it must be improving morale.
Absolutely.
It's a tough.
We're getting, we're getting thank yous from staff now, you know, I mean, cutting down the burnout rate and those kinds of things, but um, they're seeing it, but you know, they kept hearing it from us. It's coming, it's coming, it's coming, yeah, yeah, yeah. Now they're actually seeing it like. The sergeants are like, I've got a full shift here, uh, you know, they're.
It's a light at the end of the tunnel.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's good.
Wow.
Great news. What else you guys got going?
That's it for us.
That's it?
Yep.
All right. I'm gonna go show us the potter. I do see the sheriff there.
Morning. Good morning, good morning. Uh, I know everybody's busy, so I'm gonna keep it short. Um, we, we are very busy over here, um. Think in January, we're gonna be very busy, and uh, that's about it really to report, so.
Okay.
Have a great day.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna go to Pat, Pat Comic, because we don't typically see her every week, since she's been busy, but glad to have her here today. Hi, Pat.
Hi, everybody. I hope everybody's doing well. Um, we are very busy here. Um, the trial schedule has been brutal and. Just kind of looking back on it to, to see why we're, we're, we're really having a hard time keeping up with the trials. Um. Pre-COVID, they were scheduling stuff, trials, two weeks. Out of the, the, you know, four weeks and a month, and now they're, they're scheduling them for every single week, every single month. We also would have. Usually they would, they would have a month, maybe in the summer, whether it was July or August, or a couple of weeks where they wouldn't schedule jury trials, and that's gone out the window as well. So, um, when we're in trial, we cannot really work on all other cases at the same time, and so it, it's really been a challenge to keep up with the work. Um, we're doing it, we're being successful with our jury trials, but it, it's, it's been, it's been crazy, crazy busy. Um. With that, we do have felony first rewind starting in January, so hopefully that will take off um some of the pressure, but. Um, I don't know, but we're just gonna have to wait and see how things shake out. We have a couple of attorneys in the office this week that are attending a, a great training at the Attorney General's Office. It's like a four-day training for our new prosecutors. Um, so I'm really happy that they're able to do that and take advantage of that. It's, it's a great training, it's free, uh, so no cost to the taxpayers. Um. Additionally, we are down one attorney and we're down one legal assistant. One of our attorneys left pretty abruptly. He only gave us two weeks notice. Um, which can, you know, typically when you're an attorney, he's a younger person, but typically when you're an attorney, you give something like four weeks, two weeks is really difficult. So we had to distribute his caseload to everybody else in the office, which again kind of lends to. Uh, you know, the stress and the workload that we have here. Um, but we are looking to hire another attorney and one more legal assistant. We have a legal assistant. Starting here on Monday, um, so uh we're getting there with regard to the hiring and um Commissioner Coral. I'm interested with our regard to that meeting that you attended. For all the, the circuit court partners regarding the felony first rewind. I had uh Jason Smith from Salem PD stop by the office. I think it was uh maybe yesterday or the day before. I wasn't here, he spoke to one of my leads. But my understanding in, in speaking to the clerk here and, and other folks is that in terms of. What complaints are filed here in Superior Court, or you know, what complaints are filed in Circuit Court, that it'll go by the date of arrest?
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that's.
Yes.
Okay, that's my understanding, but Jason Smith seemed to think it wasn't the date of arrest and said they were telling him it's the date the. The paperwork is filed?
There was some confusion, yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I, I, yeah, there was some confusion. There was some confusion about that. It is in fact date of arrest, so anything January first. Or thereafter for arrest will be in uh Circuit Court. The other change um significantly is. Historically, you know, from the, as we all know from the first round, when um there were misdemeanors. Attached to the, do you know this already?
No, 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 go ahead.
Okay, when there are misdemeanors or violations attached to a felony, when it's sent up, there were no cross, and then you have to bring the information separately. Now they're just all being sent up to you, so you won't have the no, I mean, it's practically from your perspective, it's. Not so significant, but it's just um, they're not gonna be no process, like sent up in the packet, rather you'll just get them directly.
Okay, that's interesting. So if they're not no cross, then. Because I'm still thinking about like if we don't take a case here and we, we say, hey, just handle it in Circuit Court. As a misdemeanor, would you have to like re-arrest, would the P- PDs have to re-arrest the person again, or because they're not no crossing it, would it still be?
I think it would still be viable, still out there. It just sent up for indictments, and when it comes back, I, I don't think.
Yeah.
Because the bail conditions remain while it's bound over.
Yeah.
So if you never indict, then they're. The Circuit Court bail conditions would still govern. So you can just, uh, that, which will actually make it, you know, right?
Yeah, that, um, that's really great. Okay. So I understand too that there's a hearing, or there, the uh Rules Committee is having um. A hearing in December on the rules, so people can come in, you know. Discuss uh whether or not anything needs to be changed. So originally I thought they were gonna be finalized in November, but now it looks like they're not gonna be finalized probably until mid-December, and of course, we're supposed to start January first. So that puts everybody in kind of a difficult position, not knowing exactly what the rules are going to be, but I guess we will deal with that. Um, so, okay, well, thank you for that. Um, so other than everything I just mentioned, um, that's pretty much all I have to report, so.
Thanks, Ben.
Yeah.
I'm gonna do this.
Good morning. Oswalding facilities, I don't have a lot new to report. The um, that major heat repair down at the jail went. As well as we could possibly have expected. Everybody pulled together, the guys did a great job. Um, I would think it was virtually seamless for the folks that are living on F and G block, so I was really well pleased with how that went.
It was, Jude, it was seamless, so thank you. No one even knew that the, 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 turning heat down right now, it went very, very well.
Thank you very much. Jimmy LaPrel worked so hard on that, our lead guy down at the jail. Everybody on the team pitched in, but Jimmy really showed great leadership and pulled stuff together. I was very well pleased with the whole operation. Thank you for saying that, Jason. Um, one thing I had on my report item was that the chocolates were a gigantic hit over here too. Like they're comparing notes at shift change. I like the white ones. Did you try that? This one's like, they were very, very popular. Thank you all very much for them. Um, we have two new hires coming on board, which is virtually unprecedented for us. We're pretty excited about it. One guy's supposed to be starting. In the middle of December as our complex projects person. We've been without a locksmith for quite a while, so we're looking forward to that. And um a shift technician is working his way on board this week, so very excited. To get a little bit of new blood and hopefully give the guys some relief because they've been working thin for a long time. And uh, the HPAC project is ramping up the engineering. They're supposed to have. Um, hopefully packages ready tomorrow to go out to bid. So that's a project we've had on the books for quite a while. As Chuck mentioned, it's more than three million dollars in HPNC improvements that. We had trouble getting quotes on, so we, we backed it up a step and went for the engineering, so that's gonna be a really good project to get off. Off the table as well, and um things are going well at the new building, everything's progressing. Every time, you know, something doesn't come together, they just. I, I think the contemporary word is pivot, so they're keeping everything moving forward so that we stay on schedule. Testing for the well should be late November, early December. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. I go Jason Smith. Morning, Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, just a few updates. Um, we have one positive resident um that has COVID. Uh. Direct contact with a family member from greater community came in and later tested positive. Um. We have our COVID clinic that is scheduled for November thirtieth, that is for staff and residents, uh, that'll be held down under. Driscoll Ground. Also, um, Ken Wang, who is our life enrichment manager, uh, he has just recently received uh two certifications um of completion. Uh, so he is now a certified uh Alzheimer's and dementia care trainer, and also um he is a certified manager now, so that. Is really something that is a fantastic opportunity for our community residents and uh for the individuals we serve on our memory care neighborhood. Um, we are also recognized in the infection control today. Um, Lisa, uh, our infection preventionist, um, held an infection control fair. And they came in and did a spotlight on her and um all of the wonderful uh training opportunities she provides for our community. Um, the hospice suites uh continue to uh progress quite a bit, and I provided the timeline and some. Um, uh, drawings for you and my packet that was submitted, and also just um. Uh, the assisted living dining room, um, working on that as well. Um, with Wellesley Design Group, so we had our kickoff meeting yesterday, and so we continue to work uh through that process. Um, with senior class closing, which was part of uh Savita um. Adult Day Program, Easter Seals and Silverthorn has really increased the number of their um clients that they serve. Uh, and I know that Silverthorn did reach out to us, um, and uh I'm putting together kind of a. A list with them of some items that they may need that I'll be submitting to all of you for um any assistance possible. Uh, so thank you.
Great, thanks, Jason. Uh, Chuck.
Uh, just like as Jude mentioned and, and uh, and Julie did as well, the chocolates and cards are a big hit. I guess in our department, they're fighting with the blue ones, which are the caramel ones, I, I think. Their favorite one, and so, yes, with a seesaw, yes, so. Um, let's see, thank you to, to Megan McGowan, uh, County Attorney's Office for coordinating. The date that we can finally get our fine arts appraisal for the paintings that the county owns are over at the county courthouse. Or a state courthouse, but, and also they'll come back over here and they'll do the painting right in here for Franklin Pierce as well. Um, the individual will, obviously people can't the frames, because sometimes they never know it, the frames might be worth than, more than the painting itself. So it'll be good to have an update on that because Primax is acquiring that if we're gonna basically be ensuring that the paintings. On the fine art schedule, so we had to get that done, so thank you to Megan for coordinating that. I guess that's the court administrative. Day, I, I guess, on December fifteenth. Um. Let's see, work on uh UKG prone interventions, transition continues. Um, grants, always busy in grant land. The rental assistance one that was on extension was filed, and I. I'm sorry, but I don't care for that treasure website. It kept on crashing and not working for about an hour and a half straight on me, so that was. Made for a long day yesterday, so um, I'll be in Concord on. Made for a long day yesterday. So um I'll be in Concord on Friday for most of the day doing A H A C stuff. Um, officers' meetings, executive committee meeting, that towards meeting to do some uh budget planning for twenty twenty four because association's on the calendar year. Um, I'll also go over the accounting records with the bookkeeper with Duke Concord. So. I'll be probably just going straight home from Concord on Friday. So uh be busy with that. Obviously, some others, you know, from the county, too, will be. Well, representing, you know, rocking them at the H A C meetings, too.
I'll be there more too. I have a question with Chuck.
Yeah.
Do we have or do we anticipate getting money for fuel assistance?
We, the county itself has, and I know that there was the one shot. Thing that the uh state had done through the community cap programs, and they also have done the one shot for electric assistance as well. Uh, I can ask Emily to see if there's anything out there. Um.
I believe we had fuel assistance last year.
That was a cap program thing for the. So it was a one-shot amount for electric assistance and then and that was aside from rental assistance. And then there was also an amount for fuel. But again, it was a one-shot deal, like four hundred dollars, and then electric, I think, was less, and then it was done. And hopefully that's coming back because obviously the need is there. We still get calls today.
I got a call.
Rental assistance. You know, because we could also do electric, we could do gas, we do. So we still keep on getting calls, and it's too bad that the state didn't use the money that they kind of got from our program to extend.
Right.
Their rentals is program. They use it to reimburse themselves because they had to utilize while they were waiting for funds, they had utilized on their own. State and local fiscal recovery monies, ARPA monies. And then once they got this reallocation monies, they just use it to reallocate the monies they had used. From their own allotment of ARPA. So they can reimburse themselves, but then extend the rentals since their rentals is in program.
So if you can find something, I like I said, I gotta.
Oh, the need is, the need is out there.
Uh, and I'm, yeah, I'm sure it's greater than that. It's coming up to that season. If there's something that we can conjure up, the grant writer.
Yep.
Yeah, right. It's only other thing is that we got rid of uh that software that we got tracking all that stuff.
Uncorked.
Fork is gone, but I would say that uh if you have a constituent out there that's asking for that, like you direct them to the state, because I know the state's cap programs usually that.
The other thing is, is there anywhere? I mean, I don't know that it's your H VAC category or ARPA. No, um, it's for infrastructure, but um, you know, we to to Mr. Cheer tell you said in terms of. You you know, the obviously the need has shifted, but it's like unfortunate that we have a lot of ARPA resources for nonprofit organizations, but not. I mean, in terms of like trying to get direct assistance to our community members that are struggling with. Like, I'm sure, I know there's no.
Well, maybe there's a discussion. Maybe we can look at the ARPA money.
Oh, then that might be a kind of reallocating.
Right. Is there?
But it would be in the discussion.
I guess the question is, is there a category that it's not so much, I think everybody would probably be in agreement to do some reallocation. The issue is. Whether there is a category.
So 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 this is what the state did again.
Yeah.
With they temporarily stood up or extended their own program, but not being funded through. The rental, the E R A monies from the feds. They actually used their own ARPA monies because that is expenditure category.
Good.
That you can run your own rental assistance that can still help out with the utilities and and whatever. So.
So maybe that's where we look if we can re-take some of the nonprofit organization money and shift that to.
I mean, it'll be labor intensive. I mean, as we've gone through, I'm just.
The other thing, too.
I, yeah, that's a fair point.
I don't know if it applies, but um I think some of it, I I would think that we can move it into the lost revenue side of things. Because we qualify for a lot more in lost revenue than we put down. They increase it every year. So I I don't.
Well, we have our one, the one last measure I can do won't be till the January reporting for the quarter ending twelve thirty one. That'll be our la- our fourth year of the lost revenue count. And we're trying to keep that mostly for the building.
Right.
Because if you like, so even if you use it for labor pieces, lost revenue, it's okay. Um, as far as using it for for labor in in other departments, not directly related to COVID industry buildings, but.
Well, I think for perfect, I think that if our objective is to help with uh. U L assistance or or utilities assistance, there's a category, separate category, so we're not pulling money from lost revenues from the building. To me, the issue seems to be. Do we want to take our, this is like the the burden of, I mean, the. The management end of it. Could be pretty significant. So we have to have a more. Detailed conversation, maybe offline conversation about, you know, is this really viable without overtaxing the finance?
We we do have uncork support because remember they went, they went less through paraded month of time. So we're stuck with them. So we actually do still have it. But.
Well.
There's any payments from whatever date on forward. But again, there is a negative economic impact project under ARPA.
Yeah.
That is for like running your own rental assistance and what qualifies under that and utilities.
We can have further discussion.
Okay. It just will be from our experience with the running the E R A P, it will be.
It's very.
Suburbanity rental assistance program. It will be a labor intensive.
Anything else, Chuck?
Um, no, that's it.
I'm not.
Okay. So next week's gonna be a short week. Um, we'll be on Wednesday to do A P only. Um, so I I don't, you know, I I I'm gonna say it here. I wish everybody uh happy Thanksgiving because I probably won't see many of you. Next week, if we're only doing A P only, it'd be very quick. So happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Um. And that's it for the department. I'm gonna go to anyone have new business at all?
Um, I do have something I'd like to bring up. Um. I'd like to move closer to having forty eight hours to take a look at materials that are presented to us. Um. It's it's just become very difficult uh to keep getting stuff the day before. That I might not have that much time to, you know, look at. Uh. And and I guess I'm just opening up a discussion.
Yeah.
I I I I'd like. The materials that are given to us on Tuesday to be what we get. That gives us two days to look at the materials and. Uh, they came first thing Wednesday morning. That wouldn't bother me. Um. And then just take up the 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 items that come in later than that. Just take up the next week. It's not like we're not gonna take up the issues, just. Like to have a little bit of space in there to be able to look at it.
Yeah. So we typically, we had this discussion. Couple of years ago, too, and I had mentioned, this is basically the same thing. We want to get that information. I didn't want to get any last minute stuff. To vote on at last minute. I wanted to be able to do any research. Uh, and for the most part, I think, for the most part, I believe you're, we get that stuff in there. Is there any, anything specific that we're not getting that?
I think we consistently get it Tuesday.
We, I mean, we usually do get it Tuesday, right?
You guys, you guys get the majority of of.
Yeah.
Everything.
Yeah.
Tuesday before the end of the day.
Yeah.
Um, I usually the only things that are left over are the minutes, draft minutes, and either payroll number or the A P list.
Yeah.
Um, sometimes there are some walk-in items.
Right.
That, you know, can just. Not really much of the time, so.
Okay, so the A P list is really what I was like, I got it, and I had a couple of questions brought up. Not a big problem, but it would be nice to have. That material so that we can look at it.
Chuck, how's that? I apologize. We've actually been helping a couple of departments too with some A P items as well. So things. Kind of got pushed back a little bit longer than I would like to on the A P lists. Um, but unfortunately, sometimes it happens that way. It's times we need to keep it open a little bit longer. Like if an ever source bill comes in. They're very stringent on the the deadline dates for that, you know, as far as if it's paid late, then you're just being assessed late fee.
Right.
So sometimes we need to hold that open a little bit longer. Um, I mean, I. You know, so I do apologize. I I usually don't want to get that out as late as it was on.
Okay.
So when that was on Tuesday.
Exception, not generally the rule.
Well, again, sometimes we're, again, we're last in line for processing. Things. So whether it's payroll items or or what. You know, like, I mean, we'll we'll have the ones like for the payroll, we need to get that done by Tuesday, next Tuesday by six. Hit direct deposit, make sure there's no issues, people getting paid for the Friday. So I'm not gonna have the number Tuesday morning.
Right.
For the Wednesday meeting. I'm just.
Yeah, because you're already a date short, but.
Yeah.
Unique. That's that's just for that one. I I think it, I I'm not looking for hot fast rule. I I I'm looking for a little more consideration with that in mind. Because I'm perfectly content with unless this is an issue with moving whatever the item is to the next week. Rather than. That that just.
I'm chiming in.
I I think we, I think we get it. If we get it Tuesday. And right when I look at historically our emails, it's like internal, the bulk of the internal agenda is there. So it's. It's not.
We should, but I I I there've been a lot of little things that keep coming up, you know, I I'm just trying to avoid.
Yeah, but it's like, there's not a lot of turnaround. When you think about it, we do, we have these meetings Thursday. So by the time everything, you know, gets back worse, there's a very small window. Of putting together the following weeks, all the materials. So Tuesday seems pretty darn good to me, but I mean.
Well, that's that's certainly Tuesday. It's forty eight hours.
Yeah, I'm very happy with all the stuff we got Tuesday. Just it's the stuff that's come through on Wednesday, late in the day especially. So I'd like to put off till the following week.
So it's time sensitive. Obviously, we can't, but if it's something that can wait, I'm gonna push it out another week so that.
I typically do them.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Okay.
It's it's past the deadline, it's past the deadline, unless it's really important and then it needs to be brought up. If it's time sensitive, then, yeah, it's a walk-in.
Yeah. And we try to, we want to avoid as many walk-ins as we as we possibly. I mean, that and also that how we do.
Oh, yeah.
But anyway, okay. All right.
That's all. This is a discussion.
Any other new business or?
You know, I'm gonna, I'm going to move to change my motion um and um on the trip to Washington, which is. I feel like when I think about it for myself, I will have the opportunity to go next year because I am um going to be here. And I think the right thing to do as I think about it is, even though I'd like to go, I haven't been. Commissioner Cheer tell you went last year. I think the right thing to do, given that I worked. And I'm putting it on the record for everybody for next year that will be looking to go, but that uh Commissioner Cheer tell us that we approved two spots, I would uh support. Substituting you.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for consideration. Do we need to vote on that or?
I think so.
Okay.
All right, so maybe.
I mean, so, so moved.
All right, so the motion.
To amend.
To amend that motion.
Second.
Seconded. Uh, very special. I I appreciate that. I I do enjoy going down there and uh. You know, I was looking forward to uh that you did the budget. So I appreciate that offer and my consideration. So thank you. On the motion, Commissioner Foyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Badger.
Yes.
And I'm gonna abstain because it's made, but.
It's fine.
Yeah, so so two.
Well, so.
Zero one.
Then we have two forms.
Yeah.
That could be signed.
Right.
Perfect. Uh, any other new business at all or? I mean, all right, so um I'm gonna go to public comment. I don't see anybody from the public on Zoom or in the bill or in the room, so. We have been going to non-public.
So I moved into non-public, pushing to ninety one A, calling three two A person.
Motion's been made because I have a public second there. Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle.
Yes.
What do I do?
Yes.
And I hope, yes. Thank you, everybody. Um, have a happy Thanksgiving if you're not staying. And um, hope you all.
We've come out of non-public and I moved to seal the minutes indefinitely because because we're under a proposed action in effect.
So I got, yeah, seconded on the motion, Commissioner Badger.
Yes.
Well.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm so much.
Beers AI.
AI.
Thank you, everybody.